Hello, welcome to tonight's Town of Norfolk Planning Board meeting. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the Planning Board will meet on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in Town Hall Meeting Room 124. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person, and they are, at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, or by the remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. All right, all of our Board are here in person, so we're going to go ahead and do a quick attendance. Melissa Mayo?
Here.
All right, Gary Sullivan?
Here.
Daniel Seeger?
Here.
And Chris Motford? Hi, how's everybody doing? All right, awesome. So we have a 7 o'clock appointment, One Pine Street. This is site plan modification for a proposed gasoline filling station, signed special permit, and special permit to waive landscape requirement of 40 square feet per each foot of frontage. And this is now a request to withdraw without prejudice.
Yes.
All right. So this was a continuation?
It was a continuation, yeah.
All right, so we don't have to motion to open it?
The reason for the withdrawal without prejudice is because at the September Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, the zoning board voted to deny the variance request for the special permit and without the variant, excuse me, denied the variance for the canopy, without the canopy over top of the gas pumps, it really kind of cascaded to where they voted to deny the special permit for the gasoline filling station, so.
Okay, so they're going to go back to the drawing board, literally?
The drawing board, yep.
Bring us back to something new?
Yep.
Welcome to Gary Searle, thank you for joining. All right, so we need to motion to close it, and then motion to waive without prejudice? Or just close it?
Actually, they could just take a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
All right, so looking for a motion to withdraw without prejudice, the One Pine Street Site Plan Modification.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Awesome, all right, that leaves us about 10 minutes till our next appointment at 7:15. What do we talk about?
Go to New Orleans.
Yeah, I was just debating whether or not Four Sharon's Ave is going to keep everyone's attention, or if we should go straight to the Midway Branch Shared Use Path.
Well, we have Chris here, Bill Glouopoulos.
So let's go to four.
Yeah, we can go to, I think Four Sharon's Ave is tension getting.
Let's do it.
Yeah, so the site is probably 99% done, so they've.
Come on up, grab a mic, introduce yourself.
I see DM on there too.
Yep, we got Dan Merrick in online as well.
And you are?
Bill Glouopoulos.
Bill Glouopoulos.
Sharon Ave, property owner.
Property owner, thank you.
So they're requesting a temporary CO, so they can move in the new tenant, which is.
Parkour facility.
Parkour.
Oh, nice.
Yep, my parkour days are past, but.
Gary's almost ready to go back.
You ready to go back?
I was just practicing before I get.
Oh, good, good. Actually, my days never were, anyway, so they've requested a temporary occupancy permit so they could finish it up and get the new tenant in, so.
All right, so as described, you said 99% of the way done, what's left, what remains?
The sidewalk and the.
Yeah, so the front walkway, which, you know, the ax, the park, it's in the back anyways, but the front, the front has been graded and everything, just needs to put the pavers in, and then the parking lot, the parking lot stripes.
Okay, doesn't sound like anything crazy, nothing that's.
Everything should be done in the next, you know, couple of weeks.
Okay.
I'm hoping, well, I know the parking stripes should be, is scheduled for tomorrow, but I don't know the show.
With the weather and everything, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be sometime hopefully this week, or by the end of this week, if not early next week.
Okay, and when's the parkour company looking to come in?
So they, they are moving out of a location in Norton.
Okay.
And they're starting to, they're going to start moving their stuff into this building. They got quite a ways to go before they're open up for business, but, you know, let's just say, you know, a month before they open up, but we should be pretty much done, we should be done by then.
All right, so when are we looking to extend the temporary occupancy to Rich? What made sense?
I think.
End of December, is that, that's more than enough.
Yeah, end of December, end of December should more than.
Well, let's look at it for our December meeting, how about that, 12/9?
Sure.
Because then we don't have to go into the new year or anything like that.
No.
All right, so looking for a motion to approve a temporary occupancy permit for Four Sharon's Ave, expiring on December 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, appreciate it, you guys have a good night.
I want to.
All right, enjoy, it's riveting. All right, nine minutes, can we look at 28 Long Meadow in nine minutes, or you want to go to something else?
Uh, no, I'm not sure about that one, nine minutes.
No, definitely not that one.
So positive.
I'm thinking about it. How about we review and approve some September 9th, 2025 meeting minutes?
There you go, that's, that's a great option.
All right, any comments, edits, or concerns on the September 9th, 2025 meeting minutes?
I sent a couple, quick ones. Typos, there were, on the car wash, there was two misters with no surnames after them. Is that me, or?
Yeah, Betsy, did you grab those?
And then.
Oh, no, there's one on 36 Pine.
Is that, which one was?
Yeah, the second sentence, yeah, the second.
Where?
The end of the first paragraph of 36 Pine Street Cottage Car Wash.
Okay.
Yeah, there's Mr. Blank, move to waive, and then Mr. Second did the motion.
And on the walkway off-site, had a zero between the off and the site.
Move a second, Gary?
Uh, the shared use path at the end, uh, let me just see, uh, duh, 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 duh. I don't see it now. It said off-zero site somewhere.
I see it, it's on the last page, right at the top, first sentence, right in the middle, all right, off-zero site.
Yep.
Okay.
Any others? All right, let them take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the September 9th, 2025, four minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
All right, thank you.
You know, there was, what was that memo you sent around?
You can vote.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter if you were here or not, right?
If you watched the recording.
No, I did watch the recording, riveting, as Chris likes.
I think it either, I don't know, take me, I think it doesn't even matter if you watched the recording, actually, because it's just providing administrative function to the Board, but.
Then, you know what, I want to change on the fly, abstination to an approval.
Okay, all right.
I could talk you into it.
Love it.
All that noted in this.
All right, six minutes, Rich.
All right, we can, so I think the easier one to go to is the open space maintenance fund.
Yep. This is just a budgetary item, right?
Yeah, it's really to give the Board the authority to expend the money that's in the open space maintenance fund. So we've had, I think approximately nine subdivisions, open space subdivisions, since the inception, the first one in 1996-ish, and so it needs to set up the revolving open space fund account, so you can then expend money out of it to do maintenance on open space.
Is there any language or anything we have to look at, or?
Not yet, no, it's just, it's on the warrant.
I'm trying to pull it up right now, it's just really slow, this is really slow, and I forgot to ask IT about this.
What's going on?
Yeah.
It's pretty, the only thing is, is there's a cap, not more than $40,000 to be expended out of there.
Language is.
A year or ever?
A year.
Okay.
This will be, this will be a standing.
Revolving funds suck.
Yeah, yeah, no, we've got quite, quite a bit of money in there.
$186,000.
Yeah, and this will be one of those standing warrant articles every year that we vote, that we vote on.
Okay.
To Steve, the town will vote to establish a planning board revolving fund for open space maintenance with an expenditure limit of $40,000 by amending the general bylaws of the town, Article 5, Section 5, to insert a new row in the table after planning board advertising.
Not to belabor the point, but why 40?
It's, it's an arbitrary number, we could go higher if you want, it could go lower.
I like 50, 50 sounds better.
Let's go to point, you like 50?
50 sounds good.
All right, if you want to vote to.
Just one.
I just, I don't feel like I can do much with 40, but 50, I feel like I can do a lot of, you know? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not going to stick to it if it doesn't make sense, but what do you think?
Is it as simple as just change the number, or does there go through like the advisory board and that whole process?
They're going to vote it tomorrow night, the recommendation, so if you did want to vote it with an amendment to go to 50, I can.
Unless we think that, like, it's an arbitrary number, right, like, is maintenance ever going to be more than $40,000?
We don't know because we haven't done it yet.
Right.
We haven't done anything maintenance.
No.
How much do we have in the fund?
$186,000.
Do we need to have a number on it?
You do need to have a number.
Okay.
Yeah, you do have to have, establish how much, I mean.
And how does it get funded?
It's, it's part of the condition of open space subdivision, so it's a, it's a per la basis, so it's $2,000.
So it's a one-time funding per la as they get buildings, so effectively, we have an 80, 180K finite amount that we're playing with at this point in time.
How does it actually get expended, though? It'll be allocated in like a budget line item when the.
No, they'll, they'll have to come to you and say, hey, we want to do X, Y, and Z maintenance and where, and then you'll say, okay, and then you'll, you'll have to approve it, so it's got to get, be approved by you, the Board.
Can we proactively say, hey, like, I know of this open space, and it's kind of like, worse for where, let's get somebody in there to move it?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and more likely than not, that's probably what we'll be doing, you know, so yeah, every year we'll have a plan.
I like it.
It's tied to the developments that they were contributing? I don't think so.
No, it just goes into a fund.
No, it's all open space, no, I would argue from the spirit of it, that it should be spent.
Your comments here says it has to be that open space or that has physical connection.
I think that's a, I can get an official, but that would be my exercise judgment in terms of like, for, because it was associated with those, those nine different open space subdivisions. You could argue either way, but I think spending it on open space that wasn't part of a subdivision approval would be a little bit of a stretch out of it, because they're going to vary too, so for instance, I think I even brought it in there, or maybe I didn't write it in there, but it will be.
I'm happy to note that as a problem for another day.
Yeah, it's a problem for another day.
Yeah. All right, looking at the time, I think all except the 40, I'll take a straight vote on this right now, looking for a motion to approve.
Hold on one sec, does it say annual somewhere in here?
Yeah, we have a comment from the audience still, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Time we vote to establish.
Does it say annual?
It says revolving, but it doesn't say annual.
It's an annual, I think I have to go back to the statute that it's, to pull it up, I think article, we'll see, I think it's in the article, hold on a second.
Is that article still, still correct with, with E-code?
Do we want to table this for now and go to our 7:15 appointment?
Sure, because you're only going to open to continue it, yeah.
Okay, this is a new one, so 19 Valley Street, Dan, you want to read that in?
Yes.
It's all right?
It's okay.
We're motion to waive the reading anyway. Do I have a second?
19 Valley, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we've waived the reading. All right, so 19 Valley Street, they have a request for continuance till November 10th, 2025?
Yeah, they received the peer review comments, they want a chance to review and then come back, and go through it.
Makes sense, there were a lot of comments in there.
All right, motion to continue to November 10th, 2025 at?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome, thank you, all right, back to the open space maintenance fund.
Yeah, so that is a, that is a section of the general bylaw.
It is correct.
Yeah. Articles.
So does it specifically need to say that it's an annual revolving fund?
All the, all the revolving funds are annual, and I'm pretty sure it's based on the statute, though, so I have to give you that. Article 4.
Section 5.
Section 5, section 5.
I don't know. It doesn't say. Section 22 point dash.
It's actually 22.
Dash 23?
23D, well, that's the reporting of it, so.
Betsy, you mentioned there was a comment online?
No, there's a comment in the.
Oh, in the audience, sorry, Donna, do you want to come up and introduce yourself?
She's got a, she's got a microphone, yeah.
I can't see behind the table.
I appreciate your comment of how does it get expended, does it have to be only within the development that it came from? And when I think of open space, I think of the Conservation Commission maintaining the property, so could they spend the money? Would they need your approval to do that?
Good question. So the, so it's a statute, master in law, chapter 40, I know that's not the question, but I'll get to the question, so it's, the money in terms of the expenditure and governance is through the planning board, because they're the ones that have established the fee and collected the money, but it would be, honestly, in function, will be in conjunction with the Conservation Commission in terms of what type of maintenance activity will be done in terms of, although I will say, I still would probably argue that it should be related to the ones that were, that came in through the subdivision approvals, not just X, you know, because it was a, it was a fee assessed to a development, as part of the development process, so to take that fee and then spend on some other.
That makes sense.
Open space, that's kind of stretching outside of, I think would.
Well, then do we have a list of those properties and the amount that they contributed into it?
We do.
We do have a list of that, yeah, now to get back to Dan's earlier question, I would argue that, you know, if we, you'll have some that you're not going to spend how much they put in, and then you're going to have other ones that you're going to far exceed what they put in, just because of the maintenance that would be involved with it, so for instance, First upon Estates at some point is going to be, well, actually, I should say, the, the open space, that large parcel that's in between the two roads, is already under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, that's a more intensive property to maintain than, you know, going in and doing trimming, and then maybe putting down some mulch and so forth on trails in some of the other open space subdivisions, so it's not, it's going to be, the judgment is going to be exercised by this Board, though, because you're the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to solve this for the actual establishment of the fund, but it would be interesting to talk more at some point in the future about how it's actually allocated, because if there, you know, say there isn't really a need in one of these subdivisions, but there is a need elsewhere in town, you know, that benefits all the residents, including those within the subdivision, I'd rather see it go to good use than just sit there, you know, and continue to gather interest for revolving fund, but, you know, again, I don't think that's necessarily something we need to solve for the bylaw.
We have a hand up, Java J?
Oh, I think that's the cursor.
Sorry.
That was like, perfect, all right, never mind, sorry, Java.
No, I think it's a, it's a really relevant, valid point, and actually, as we, related to it, as we get going through the open space and Recreation Plan Update, that's going to be one of the main focal points about the whole, this plan, is that maintenance piece. Again, this will establish so you can expend the money out of it, but you said you were okay with the 40 for now?
I'm okay with the 40 for now, we can amend it next year, once we actually know how much we're going to spend, but I'd like it to be meaningful, I'd like to be able to get stuff done.
Yeah.
The 40 is a little bit more conservative, considering that we're at like 180K, it'll last longer that way, so I get it, but like you said, if we have something that needs significant amount of remediation, then 40 is not necessarily going to make it.
Yeah, and I think, correct.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve, or to vote, I'm looking for a motion to place the article on the November 12th, 2025 Special Town Meeting warrant to establish the revolving fund for the open space maintenance.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, hearing none, it's passed, thank you. We've got eight minutes, can we do MacArthur Ave?
Sure. So I think you're pretty well familiar with this, but so MacArthur Ave has been completed in terms of construction, the, so now we're at the stage of having gone before Town Meeting to accept it, which would be just the section where the T is.
The hammerhead.
The hammerhead, and the purpose, as you, just for freshen your memories, that way when you drive up Hunter Ave, you'll have a place to be able to turn around and come back out, which previously just dived into the woods, the, it is, it is going through the process of the acceptance through an eminent domain process, because it's a paper street, and so it was not clear, the developer, in this case, that built the single-family home on Town MacArthur Ave, doesn't have all the rights and interest in MacArthur Ave deal conveyed to the town, so we do have to go through the eminent domain process, so we'll be as such at the, at the town meeting, so hopefully with the Board blessing and recommending going forward, the Select Board next Monday night, the, excuse me, October 20th, they'll hold a public hearing, notice was sent out to the Butters.
Yep, have you spoken to them recently, like, how are they with everything?
I spoke into them a few months ago, prior to starting this process, this.
I think he's on, too, if you have any questions.
Who's on?
Oh, Franz.
Oh, okay. We sent out letters to, so title report was done earlier in the year, sent out, noticed everybody, let them know about the intent and purpose of it, and that this is all predicated on the fact that they would waive damages when, and had interest, after understanding the whole purpose, no one objected to it.
Okay.
Of course, obviously, you know, we haven't, Town Meeting hasn't taken action yet, something could happen, but so far, everything indicates that everybody seems to be on board with it, and it's only that one section of it.
Yeah, and that abandoned section.
Still remains.
Still remains, everybody's good with the way that it is currently?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, and we did something to stop like Amazon trucks from going up and stuff like that.
Yeah, so I mean, now the way the road is, you know, once Franz had constructed the, per the plan, it drops off, and then there's the riprap, which is used as a, you know, just to collect the stormwater, it's not, it's not really vehicle.
Perfect, obviously, anybody on the Board recently been over there? I went a while ago, like, over the summer, and went all right, and crazy, like, anything like that.
I think when they did the top coats the last time I've been there, so if that was the summer, it may be the spring, looked fine.
Okay, all right, cool, awesome, all right, so I'm fine with pushing this for street acceptance, I'm going to look for a motion to recommend MacArthur Avenue for street acceptance at the November 12th, 2025 Special Town Meeting, and the bond release will be a second vote.
That's a second vote, yeah, so just for street acceptance.
Just for street acceptance.
Yeah, and then the bond be separate.
So moved. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the first motion carries, all right, talk to me about the bond, where are we at with that?
So the bond was to ensure that all the construction was to be done in accordance to the approved plan, as you know, I just mentioned, everything's been constructed.
And DPW signed off, they're happy with everything.
They signed off on it, we have the acceptance plan that.
The asbills are good.
The asbills are good, so there is no, there's no reason to.
When we receive asbills, do we have Beta go out there and just confirm?
Not in this particular instance, because it wasn't of scale for them to go out and do it, this was done through DPW.
Okay, all right, how much is left in the bond?
I think it's actually the full amount that it was originally, it's like 20, Franz, how much was the bond?
It was originally 25,000, I think we got it reduced last year, but there was a minimum fee to the insurance company, so it didn't really matter, the bond cost me like $800 a year, but I think it was, like I said, originally 25,000.
Thank you, all right, so looking for a motion to release the bond for MacArthur Avenue.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion carries, thank you so much, Franz.
Thank you.
All right, three minutes.
We can do it.
Which one?
Bedway Branch.
Let's do it, three minutes, discuss it, holding a workshop.
Yeah, so I'd suggest to the Board to hold a workshop, so I gave you some options, one would be do it before your next, before the November meeting, which would be November 10th, could do a special meeting, hold it, but first, I would like suggesting you host it, because you're pretty familiar with this type of project, you could do a special meeting if you want, but, so what I would, what I would do is, I would, we'll get a, we'll get a Butters list of everybody that abuts Bedway Branch, and we'll send out a letter to let them know they're going to have a workshop, and they can invite to come, and we can talk through, this is really just a segment between Barnstable Road and Tucker Road, but at the workshop, we really want to talk about the larger plan, which is to eventually, you know, go beyond the transfer station on the former Midway Branch rail line to, to make it a shared use path all the way out.
Now, is this something that we would do in conjunction with like MIPC, or is this us all on our own with good?
This is all ours right now, when we go, when we get to, I will call Phase 2, which would be going beyond the transfer station out, then we would engage, similar to like we did with Medicom and Greenway Engineering Company, you know, look through design options, public workshops and so forth, and, you know, look at any rights issues that we may need, all that kind of stuff, flush that all out.
Okay.
First, but in terms of, this will be the first step in terms of, for this phase to hold the meeting, and then we could talk about that, plus going from Tucker Road all the way down to Boardman, to actually widen that at some point, so it's uniform, 10-foot shared use path all the way down to Boardman Street, and then will lead to a future phase, which would be cross-Boardman down to the commuter rail station, which would be much further out, because that would be coordinated with MBTA to be able to do something that would be a shared use path that they would have to be involved with, because we'd be.
Do we have visuals?
Officially invited.
I was just gonna ask, yeah. Like, if we're gonna hold a workshop, right, like, it would be helpful, I think, for folks to be able to visualize that, whether, just highlight the part that we're talking about, and then, subject to change future state, or phase it up, or, you know, but something like that.
Yeah, so I put together a present, I think it was a while ago now, presented, so we would use similar, those same slides.
I do remember that, actually, yeah.
So we would use that to.
Show the phases?
Yeah, the phases of it.
And the workshop would be its own thing, or part of one of our?
That's what I'm asking you.
Yeah.
You got the option, or potentially option, right, so.
It should, my opinion, it should be its own thing, just so that it's like the focus of the entire conversation, we don't have other things that are competing for our time.
But, so, which is completely fine, totally makes sense, I would probably like to not get beyond the middle, not beyond the middle of December, like, I think, I think we go to, because we submitted the application October 1st, then, give or take, we might be hearing by January.
So if we wanted to do it for simplicity's sake, in an existing meeting?
Yeah, you could adjust your schedule.
We just started earlier, if everybody. Oh, yes, so do like a 6 o'clock thing?
Yeah, you could do that if you wanted to.
Have like pie and punch to get people in the door.
What's that?
Pie and punch to get people in the door.
Pie and punch? I heard there'd be punch and pie.
You could do that if you want. I mean, what do you?
What kind of pie are we talking?
I just, it's seasonal, I mean, we'll see what's hot in the next couple of weeks, I'm a good baker.
I don't, in terms of forecasting November, well, you're not gonna be here.
Not, the 10th or 11th, no.
When would our December 1 be?
December 9th?
I could be here early for that, if, yeah, I could do the 9th early.
It's probably actually a good time anyway, because it would give enough time to, you know, let everybody know about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because November 10th is really not that far away.
It's not.
It's not, yeah, December 9th would be good, and we do it before the meeting, which would be good, so people don't have to sit around until.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
So we'll do an hour-long workshop, and then we'll open up the planning board at 7:00.
We would have to open the meeting at?
Well, I mean, you go to general, regular business.
Yeah, 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 okay, right, because if we're all talking.
Makes sense.
We're gonna do it here.
Right here.
Right here. Good.
Yeah, I'll be here.
You're not expecting a large turnout for it?
Just the Butters, right?
I don't know.
But, actually, wait, so let's play, like.
It's gonna be hybrid.
We should, we should, hybrid's good, but we should, like, broadcast it, it's like, hey, like, because this is kind of an interesting concept, we don't have one of these in town, we, I don't know many towns that have this, there might be people, because we know so many, so many people in this town love municipal planning, they're gonna show up.
Well, but you know what, a lot of people in town, during the master plan process, really, really wanted sidewalks, we heard that so often, so we can show.
You know, we would set, I don't know, this is kinda light, the way this room is set up this evening, but, we would set this up for 40 people?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we had a good amount when we were talking about the senior.
That's right.
I'm not too worried about the location personally.
And we would, consternation, obviously, we'll communicate with Karen, let her know, oh, I already, already gave her a heads up that we were gonna be doing this, so, now we have a date she can.
So, we're gonna do it on the 9th at 6:00 PM, that's all set in stone, it's 7:34 now, so, 50 Fruit Street Stormwater Management Permit Public Hearing.
All right. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk General Bylaws Section 26713. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, at 7:30 PM, in Room 124 of the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, relative to a stormwater management permit application for property located at 50 Fruit Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, Christos Kloropoulos, is requesting a stormwater management permit for the demolition of an existing single-family dwelling and construction of a new single-family dwelling with all pertinent driveways, landscape areas, utilities, and stormwater facilities. The property is located in the R3 zoning district, reference assessor's map 16, block 55, lot 68. The application and plans are available for public inspection on the Town of Norfolk website, or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 6 AM and 9 AM to 6 PM, Monday through Thursday.
Thank you, Joe. All right, Rich, please, up to speed.
Sure, and Dan American is joining us via Zoom, with the engineer record for the project. So, just to tip this off, it's an interesting project in terms of the stormwater management bylaw, it, it's an existing single-family home that's being demolished, and then gonna be a new home, a new garage, and landscaping and so forth. It's being triggered by the stormwater management bylaw whereby, if you clear more than an acre of the property, it triggers a stormwater management permit, so, to my knowledge, is the first one that's been before the planning board in the Town of Norfolk. It's, if it was less than an acre, it wouldn't even be here, so, which is kind of interesting, right, so, from a regulatory standpoint, but, but it is, and it's, and it's already been cleared, so, the owner has been cooperative in terms of, you know, realizing really, like, oh, like, cleared more than acre, and that, that triggered the stormwater bylaw, which is not, not surprising, because stormwater bylaws for single-family homes, that's kind of a newer thing in terms of stormwater management in many communities, so, he's been fully cooperative, and he's filed a stormwater management plan, and Dan American's here to represent him. The one thing I did hear from the interim DPW director, they recommended that a third-party review on behalf of the, of the planning board, as opposed to DPW doing that review. I did send it out to Beta Group for a, a peer review estimate, but I think it'd be good to hear from the board and kind of talk about this in general, because you very well may see other ones potentially come to the fore, so. Kick it off to Dan for the rest of them.
Sure, thank you, Rich, may I have permission to share my screen?
Sure. I'll stop, Dan.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, my name is Dan American, with Legacy Engineering here, behalf of property owner Chris Kloropoulos, he could not be here tonight, he's ill, and was not able to make it, but, as Rich outlined to you, this is an existing single-family house lot, it's quite large, it's 8.6 acres. What you're looking at is the existing condition, long driveway from Fruit Street, existing home, an existing pool, an existing pool house, and there's landscape areas associated with all of this, so, in the current condition, probably two and a quarter, two and a half acres of the site are part of kind of the landscaped area of the existing home. The applicant would like to build a new house for himself and his family, and that involves, and there's lots of color here, but that basically just involves moving the driveway, which I'll talk about in a minute, rebuilding the existing single-family home, essentially in the same location as, as what's there now, just a different house, and then garage. That comes with a new septic system, and all of the other colors you see here are stormwater management issues that are designed to comply with your bylaw, and as Rich indicated, this is, you know, kind of unusual to have to go through a full-blown stormwater management design for a house, but, because the work does disturb more than an acre, the existing, as I said, the existing house and yard is, is more than an acre, so just to rebuild all of that triggers it anyways, and the applicant didn't know that he needed this permit, so we're here to, to address that and provide the required drainage system design and demonstrate compliance with the bylaw. What we have proposed for stormwater management, and I'm just gonna give you an overview, because I know you're gonna go to peer review, for each of the new structures, this is the garage, this is the house, there'll be underground stormwater infiltration systems around the structure, and basically tie in your gutters to an underground system, and they'll infiltrate runoff from those areas. This is a septic system, which is a separate thing, the septic system for the existing house is here now, we have to rebuild it for the new house, and then these, these hatched areas are something you might not be familiar with, but we're using a low-impact development, L.I.E., credit techniques, which is nice in a, on a site like this, where you have a lot of land area, you can take essentially areas of lawn that have a modest slope where you can direct runoff from impervious surfaces over, and it provides treatment and infiltration for that runoff, and it meets the requirements for treatment and recharge from those impervious areas, so, these hatched areas, these green hatched areas here, here, and along the driveway, are just gonna be grass, but, from a stormwater management standpoint, they provide for treatment and infiltration runoff. The last thing is, in order to make sure that in the post-construction condition, the peak rate and peak volume of runoff in every design storm is below the existing condition, we need to provide a shallow stormwater infiltration basin, it's actually a detention basin, it's only two feet deep, it has very shallow sideslopes, it's gonna look like it's part of the lawn, that's part of the design intent, and we've provided you with a stormwater report, that I'm sure that you'll be sending off to your peer review consultancy review, that basically outlines compliance with the stormwater bylaw. The total disturbance area, as Rich indicated, trees were cut, it's about four acres, four and a quarter acres, so that's current, yard area is about two and a quarter acres, so another two acres, trees were cut around, you can see this limit of work here, this whole area, I'll show you. This is the aerial, so, in the proposed condition, this is the aerial photo. So, this whole area here is part of the existing yard proper, some trees were taken there, but that was part of the landscape yard of the site. Trees were removed around where the proposed garage will go, mostly pine trees, a lot of other deciduous trees were left there, and then some trees were removed along the left side of the property where the new driveway is gonna go. One of the reasons why we wanna relocate the driveway, and this is gonna be the subject of a different hearing at your November meeting, scenic road hearing, in the existing condition, and this is a condition that predated the current owner's use of the property, runoff, let me show you the existing conditions of the land here. So this is what's out there today. So right now, there's a stone wall that runs along the frontage here, and it ends at driveway mouth, and then it picks up again on the other side, and unfortunately, what happens now is that the runoff from the road comes along the gutter of the road, and then it cuts across the driveway, and then it runs down through this property into our neighbor's property. Now, this is a condition that existed, that's existed for decades, and this house at 46 Fruit Street was just recently constructed, it's a new house, whoever built that house, I don't know who did, they did not address this issue, and I now understand that they're having problems, which is totally understandable. So, when we relocate the driveway from this location to here, what we will do is, we will fill in the stone wall here, we will remove all this driveway, and all of that street runoff that runs along the gutter of the road will run into this existing catch basin here, and that is piped down the road, and then I believe discharges into a wetland system that's down here, down below our neighbor's property, to the right, there's a farm over there, so to the right of 46 Fruit Street, there's a wetland area, and extensive wetland area, and that, I believe, is where the street drainage goes. So that will remedy the drainage issue that I know that the Butters at 46 Fruit Street have, has noted to, to town staff, and I just wanna kind of cover that, to make sure that they understand that this change will solve that problem.
Is there anybody chime in as the property owner at 46?
Can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, Mike Cleary, 46 Fruit Street, just moved in there a couple years ago, I did send some of those videos of that ephemeral stream that pops up during heavy rains, absolutely, Daniel, the road, because of the degradation of the mouth of the driveway, it is funneling water in there, but there's also another tributary to that, that pops up, I don't know if it's like a pipe or a culvert, something that was put underneath the driveway that goes up about, I'd say about 25 feet from the mouth of the driveway, there's another source of water that's coming that flows after the rain has stopped, so typically, when it's on the road, it's when it's raining, is when the water's coming in, but then after the rains have stopped, there was water that would pond on the left side of the driveway and make its way underneath and continue to keep that stream running for sometimes two days after the rains had stopped, so I just wanted to make sure if that was being addressed as well, just to make sure that, because that is in that wetland kind of area right there, if that was anything that you guys looked into.
I wasn't aware of that, I'm happy to meet you out there and go over that with you, if you reach out to Rich or Betsy, they can give you my phone number, and I'm happy to meet you to go over that.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's the overview, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
Understand that we need some, we need to do some work here with peer review and all of that, but, I just wanted to give you the, the big picture.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, so, what's the thought on the peer review, I know you said it was going for quote, is it something that if it's importantly expensive, you wanna see if we go without? What are your thoughts there, Rich?
Uh, no, I think the question will be, let's see what it comes back with, and if there's particular things that may need to be adjusted, I guess, but I wouldn't go without, I think it's important that, that it's done, and, so.
Do we have any idea from Beta when to expect completion?
I would imagine I probably would have it this week, and so, the, the goal would be to get it shortly. And then send it to the applicant, hopefully they don't have any issue with it, agree to sign the scope and provide the fee for that, and then have it ready for the November 10th meeting. Hopefully, we should be lined up for November 10th, I suppose if we're not ready, then you could always.
Continue.
Continue, but there will be the, the public hearing for the scenic road, the street opening.
What time's that at, do we have that? Oh, Betsy just stepped out.
She stepped out, I think we're gonna make it so they're coincide together, though, so, whatever, 7:30, I don't think we have anything scheduled, I think we'll just marry him up at 7:30? You did 7:15 for Valley Street, I think, for next month, right?
We did 7 for Valley.
Oh, 7, okay.
Betsy's on her way back.
I have that on for 7:30, Rich.
7:30, okay.
So we'll go with the?
7:30.
7:30.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to continue 50 Fruit Street to our November 10th meeting at 7:30.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion approves, we'll see you in November 10th, hopefully we'll have more information by then, and, hope, Mike and Dan, you get to meet up on site and see what's going on with that driveway and that possible culvert. Awesome, thanks, everyone.
Great, thank you for your time, have a good night.
Appreciate it. All right, moving into an equally exciting topic, we have a 7:45 public hearing. We have a 7:45 public hearing to discuss the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for the November 12, 2025 special town meeting.
You ready? Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Mass General Law that the Norfolk Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 14, 2025, at 7:45 p.m. at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, to discuss proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaw, which have been submitted to the warrant for the November 12, 2025 special town meeting. Complete copies of the text of the amendments are available for review at the town of Norfolk website or in the planning board office during the hours of 9 to 6, Monday through Thursday. The proposed zoning bylaw amendments are as follows. One, to see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend the Norfolk zoning bylaw by adding the attached language in bold print and deleting the strike-through language to Section 310 6.5, enclosure, swimming pools, and mobile homes, or take any action in relation thereto. Two, to see if the town in Norfolk will vote to amend the Norfolk zoning bylaw by adding the following new language attached in bold print and delete the following strike-through language to Section 310 8.3, affordable housing development, or take any action in relation thereto.
All right, Rich, let's kick it off with 310 dash 6.5.
All right. You you saw the this article as you submitted to the warrant. The one thing you didn't see, which was added when it went through council, was the last sentences related to consistency provision with state statutes, so where if you have a manufactured home, you can have it up to a year. If it was destroyed by fire or natural disaster. So to be consistent, not have a conflict with that, that that provision was added to it. The other provisions, why they're there is there's instances now where folks have made significant investments in their homes, and they'll, they're not really habitable. Why some of that work is going, and we've, we had, there's been two. One was a significant project in terms of he was completely out. He was cited for for violation because he had a camper on site to live there temporarily.
This was in front of ZBA.
It was, yeah.
It was.
So they they upheld the zoning enforcement, zoning enforcement officer. So he vacated the home, had to find temporary housing. Then shortly thereafter, there was another one that was on Turner Street, family making significant renovations to their home, and they had a camper on the site on their property that they were living out of it temporarily while the construction going, was going on in their home. And for them, it became, you know, became more apparent where they have kids in the school system, and as weighing out all your options, that was a more manageable option for them to to maintain their occupancy in their, on their property while they're doing renovations to the property. As it turned out in that particular one, they end up completing it before the ZBA had to make a decision on it, and so that one went away. So then question came forward. And that particular homeowner did a lot of research and presented to the ZBA that these are real things that come up, particularly as you, you know, make renovation changes to your house.
Yeah.
At some point, it becomes not really that habitable, and you need to, when it's not so easy to find temporary housing. So they choose this path. And so the thought is to add that provision in the zoning bylaw. It'd be tied six months, which would be consistent with a building permit for the work and to be discretion through the building commissioner. So that's the the purpose of this bylaw change.
And then at six months, they could get potentially get an extension.
Extension of any, yes.
But it's a max of 12 months. That's how it reads at the end.
Yes.
Yes.
Has everybody gone through the language?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns?
I'm just reading that last line, notwithstanding this bylaw. So we're adding the part, the beginning part about, you know, if you're doing a substantial renovation, you could live on your property in a temporary home, and then also separate from that.
Yeah, it was embedded in the bylaw in the top section of it. So instead of words, I'm thinking how to just add it as a.
Okay. So also, if there was a natural disaster, you could have a mobile home. Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question that doesn't actually pertain to this as it's written. I think this is fine. If it's the middle of February, and they're in a, on a non-insulated trailer, that's like a board of health issue at that, like, like, there's, there's things in place to, like, the building commissioner would be able to say, like, hey, you can't do this for health reasons because it's unsafe.
I think that's why we go to the point of calling it a temporary home as opposed to like a travel trailer or something like that.
That's a, that's a good question. I would think this is, could be, somebody would exercise judgment and not put themselves in a situation where they're going to be too cold, that they would have to find alternative.
But I think from a jurisdiction perspective, it's not on us. I think the closest thing would be building commissioner or board of health.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so then I'm fine with this one. I would look for a motion to approve.
Was there any public?
Uh, any public comments, comments from the audience? Awesome. All right. So looking for a motion to approve Section 310 dash 6.5 as written in the agenda for the town meeting, November 12, 2025.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, so let's go to the media 310 dash 8.3.
For housing development. So in terms of the version that was submitted for the warrant, to place on the warrant, this version, there were some changes in terms of just cleaning up the language that was in it. Not material changes. But I should step back from that until the overall purpose is first, before we get into the details, right? So as you know, back in 2021, there was a citizen petition to change the inclusionary bylaw. There was a few changes to that bylaw. One was a rounding up. There wasn't a previously rounding up if it was 0.5. That remains in this bylaw. That's not changing. Then the the threshold trigger point was, went from, it was 10 previously, brought down to six. This bylaw proposes to keep it at the same in terms of that, that point, starting point. But then within that change, there was a scaling provision. So it went from five to, well, sorry, not five, six. Six to 12 at 10%, and then went 13 units to 19 units, became 15%. And then above 20 units, 20 or more became 20%. And so we have, at that particular time, there was potential raising the point that that might, by scaling it up, there might be situations where a developer would choose a path of doing 40B rather than going under the zoning bylaw, whether it's multifamily or single-family home. Because we're nowhere close to 10%.
And alternatively, not build at all, which is what we have seen.
Or not build at all. So.
We've seen both.
Yeah, fair.
We've seen some building, but after that was enacted, and we have experienced in terms of developments that, well, one particular subdivision that was open space subdivision, if you remember, I know history wise, I think you were the only one on the board, Gary, which was Cranberry Heights.
Yes.
They actually, uniquely, they would drew with prejudice.
With prejudice?
Really?
Yes.
They drew with prejudice because they didn't want anybody else to come back in with the project, because they were trying to purchase.
Right.
The slattery property at the time, they didn't have it under agreement. And there was issues more related around Buckley Man and blasting in the wells and so forth and so on. So anyway, that that went by the boards. And then the bylaw, they then moved forward, the land was up right at first refusal before the town to purchase it. The town declined to purchase the slattery property. That was the second time, actually. Well, maybe third, actually. Two that I know of, might have been the third one, I think. And so that point, they went forward, and they purchased the land. So when they purchased it, they said that, you know, with 20%, it's really more economically feasible for, to add, go to 25%, which is the minimum amount for affordable housing, and go through 40B because then I, then they have the ability to override the local zoning, the.
Density, I heard.
Density. And then it went from 21 to 53, or 51, I think it was, 53, I think it's 53. And so they filed with Mass Housing, and they have a project eligibility letter, and they're sitting, they haven't, they haven't filed yet, but that's one we're aware of it, where it did make a difference. And then the much talked about Pondville Crossing in Pondville, which they were pursuing multifamily development under the multifamily bylaw in Pondville. And they just purchased some property, and then simultaneously, the bylaw changed, and they were looking at like 48 units originally. They weren't buying all these other properties up at the time. And so then it kind of mushroomed into, well, we can't make it work under the bylaw, so we're going to go 40B. And so they then bought other parcels and assembled, and they have a project eligibility letter for 200 multifamily units. The town did in the spring, extend the MBTA district over it. All indications are that they are going to go through the MBTA, which would bring it down to 140 units. Abutting that in the, kind of in the middle section of it, is another development that that one is a 40B as well for 59 units. And then going through the zoning analysis with Town Center, the question was asked, is that inclusionary, does it have an impact on mixed-use development? And the answer was yes. It's not the single factor, but it certainly has a factor in terms of doing mixed-use developments. So the prevailing thought is, to bring it back to where it was, we still start at six, but we're at 10%. And then we've added a a buyout number. If you want to buy out, payment in lieu of $350,000 was board discussed presently under the present formula, it's $511,000, $520,000 to buy out for one unit, because the median single-family home price in town is $811,000 that we just, to do the math. And that's a significant amount of money. In cases of smaller projects, there's value in giving consideration for a developer to buy out because it's better for the, for the neighborhood, and then for an affordable buyer, because of what we see in new family construction, our much larger homes. And hopefully, at some point, we might see smaller ones, but quite frankly, they're not there yet. So they kind of stick out potentially, because you need to blend in, right? So they need to be able to be undistinguishable from the other market-rate homes. So the number was set at 350. It will need to be revisited as we go up, you know, as we move forward. But that number was established as a reasonable amount that would provide some money into the trust to add more affordable housing, but yet, at the same time, have a number where you, you can look at a development, have a discussion where maybe you might want to encourage a developer to buy out. There is a rental as well can buy out, too. That's not in the previous version of it. That's really kind of the fundamental was of it. We change D H C D, Executive Office of the Housing Level Communities. And we did add, which I think is important, too, which is this version, there is anti-segmentation provision in it, so you can't, you know, divide your property to try to get under the inclusionary bylaw, which could very well happen if this goes through as is. That will prevent that from happening as well. So that's another provision to kind of hold, hold things consistent. So that's kind of the summary of it. Pause now.
So I'll start with the board. We've spent some time reviewing this.
A little bit.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? I don't think we need to go through it line by line. I did notice, Rich, under the table for affordable units where it says note, note's been crossed off, we have an asterisk next to the construction of affordable units. I cannot for the life of me find where that asterisk lines up towards.
Where's the table?
It was in the table, the old table.
Okay, so we need to get rid of that and replace where this should go. Thank you, Gary.
Don't. I think it's going to slide up right behind a fractional unit, a 0.5 or more shall be rounded up to the next whole unit.
So just get it out as part of the paragraph.
Yeah, it'll be added to the paragraph above.
All right, so taking a note on that for the the vote.
So the asterisk should be stricken and not underlined?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then it just goes to.
Right? And then it just goes up to after.
Yeah, it would just go behind unit.
Okay.
That may just be a red line issue.
I think it is.
Goes through the middle.
Yeah.
It looks like it's keeping the asterisk.
That's very possible.
Yeah.
It definitely is a red line issue. Yeah, it is in your, I think it's shared.
Okay. Before I open it up to the audience, any questions, comments from the board? All right, hearing none. Do we have any comments from the audience? Mr. Diamond, come on up. Welcome back.
Thank you, everybody from the planning board. My name's Peter Diamond from 84 Seconk Street. I am a member, recent addition to the Norfolk Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. I'm also a member of the Community Preservation Committee. First, I would like to say that I'm a little behind the ball with regard to the actions of the planning board on the inclusionary zoning bylaw due to a family crisis. As many of you know, I would typically be online attending your meetings. But in the last 48 hours, I have reviewed some of the videos and your discussions on the inclusionary zoning bylaw change. Where do I start? So I'd like to provide some comment on Rich's three examples of projects that went to 40B, on being Cranberry Heights, Pondville Crossing, and Pondville Station. It has been said, the main reason for the change back to 10% has been said that it's caused developments to go the 40B route, the comprehensive permit, right? So Cranberry Heights, I'm just going to tell you what that is. It's 51 single-family homes on approximately 30 acres in the R3 zoning district, which requires 55. requires 55,000 square feet for the lots and 200 feet of frontage. Under 40B, the developer will have 18,000 square foot lots with 20 feet of frontage. These are the main waivers the developer seeks. The density at Cranberry Heights will be at less than two units per acre. This development will be like a traditional subdivision with a bit more density and the best part, Norfolk will get 13 affordable units. All right, Pondville Crossing. Pondville Crossing is a 200-unit apartment complex on 7.75 acres of land, which is in the C1 on highway zoning district off Pine Street and also on Valley Street. So the part on Valley Street is in the C1D off highway, so it's a split zone, the 7.75 acres of land. Approximately three acres of this land is in the C1 on highway, which does not allow residential development, period. A portion of this land had prior approval for an eight-home 40B project, which was called Whitney's Way, which has been swallowed up by the Pondville Crossing development, which was also partially located in the C1 on highway zone, which does not permit residential development. This is the main reason these projects went for the comprehensive permit. And then with regard to Pondville Station, Pondville Station is a 59-unit apartment complex on 2.14 acres in the C1D off highway zoning district. This project would not get the density without a comprehensive permit that it seeks. The development is actually in the MBTA overlay zone, which was created recently, which allows 18 units per acre at a 10% affordable. This would have allowed approximately 38 units at a 10% affordable, which includes four units, and the developer still chose to go the 40B option. Next, I would like to point out that Norfolk has eight 40B projects that were all approved during a time here in Norfolk when the inclusionary zoning bylaw was at 10%. The inclusionary zoning bylaw, in my opinion, has little to do with the reasons a developer chooses to move forward with a 40B development. And I'll quickly go through that list of projects. In 2016, Boyd's Crossing at Main Street has 40 units. In 2017, Lakeland Farms at 82 Cleveland Street has 32 units. In 2017, the Village at Norfolk at 25 Rockwood Road has 32 units. In 2019, the Enclave at Village Green has 40 units. Number five, in 2020, the residents at Norfolk Station, which is 194 Main Street, has a proposal for 32 units. They haven't gone forward on this project. They've already seek extensions on their special permit twice through the ZBA, so that project still could be developed or not, so we'll see. Number six is Lakeland Farms at 144 Secong Street. We all remember this, the whole neighborhood was up in arms about 104 units, but that has 44 units. That resulted in 44 units, that's on 20 acres, that's a beautiful development. The houses in there are going for a million plus and the affordables are 350. Waits Crossing on Lawrence Street has 64 units. And Whitney's Way, which was swallowed up by Pondville Crossing, which was at 35 Pine Street, was approved for just eight houses and that was, the entrance for that was off Pine Street, which is on highway district. So that's the reason they went for 40B. Then my next comment on the change back to 10%, if you'll permit through the chair that I can continue, do you want to pause for any comments from the board here?
Any comments at this point?
Okay.
Thank you.
Recently, a well-respected developer who's done many 40B projects in this area came in front of the Norfolk Municipal Affordable Housing Trust and said the comprehensive 40B process gives him assurance the development will happen. He explained that many times when trying to approve a project with the planning board, there would be repeated engineering and design changes that would result in a project that was very costly in the, at the approval process and sometimes was even denied. Many other reasons to do a 40B project may involve wetlands and the state requirements are less stringent than the local conservation regulations. We also need to look at the waivers from local bylaws requested by a comprehensive permit, which include, for example, more density, reduce lot sizes, waivers on road length and width, Cape Carberms over granite curbs, for example, just to name a few. Boyd's Crossing on Main Street had three dozen waivers from the Norfolk bylaws, not just the IZB where they were concerned about. Lakeland Farms on Cleveland Street had four dozen waivers. In my opinion, the change back to 10% will have little impact on to deter 40B development in Norfolk. The developers will choose the 40B path due to the many reasons other than just our inclusionary zoning bylaw. I have asked you all and the planner for consideration to keep the 15% cap in my table. Instead of rolling back to the 10%, but this proposal was not considered, I think it was considered, but in the end you all decided to just go 10% across town. I am pleased that the starting point of the proposed change stays at six units and the language that fractions of point, point five or more round up to the next whole unit. I have concluded that the change back to 10% was brought forward, in my opinion, without merit. To outright present to the citizens of Norfolk that this change is needed because Norfolk's current inclusionary zoning bylaw creates 40B development is unfounded. Those are my comments on the inclusionary zoning bylaw. And next, if we could go through some of the language in 310-8.3, line by line, if we could possibly pull, is there any comments on that?
Exactly, yes, any comments from the board? Sue, would you like to make some comments?
Sure.
Please.
Come on over. I can give you one of them.
Thanks.
Good evening. Well, lucky am I.
Okay, we'll just preface that I don't want it to be a continual back and forth.
Yeah, absolutely. Sue Jacobson, Affordable Housing Director, I just want to bring up one point that I think it's important for the board to know. Rich and I are involved in all of the pre-construction meetings with developers. I'm included if there's an affordability factor, otherwise I don't participate. And we've sat with the, with different developers who have told us frankly, that the reason that they've gone this route is because of the increase in the inclusionary zoning bylaw and that if they're forced to do 20%, they'll just do 25% to get the density and the higher number of units. So I just want people to be aware that it's not, you know, something that we've sat down and just decided that we think that this is a great idea to return to. It absolutely is coming from feedback that we have received in meetings. Those meetings are not before boards, they're not before other, typically the building commissioner does attend, I attend, Rich attends, police chief, fire chief, any of the department heads have an impact or want to speak to those new developments coming to town and provide feedback to the developers. So I just wanted to kind of make that clear, that this is not without meetings and thoughts and discussion with folks that are involved in making those decisions.
I appreciate that, yeah. I think from your comments and Mr. Diamond's comments, it's easy for us to kind of identify that it's not just one thing at the end of the
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
I think it's easy to say, yeah, if you're going to hit me with 20 because I want to do more than 20 units, I can just go to 25 and really recoup my costs at that perspective and at that point. For some of these smaller locations that you had noted, Mr. Diamond, you know, they weren't coming up to that 20%, obviously, but they did have other benefits by doing so, as you said, building in a highway restricted zone, and additionally, like the number of waivers that they were requesting, right? Building in Norfolk is not easy. When I joined the planning board, one of the comments that I heard was, what are the first two letters in Norfolk?
No.
No, exactly. And so, you know, that's something that I think we need to come to terms with and we need to figure out, how do we move in a manner that is beneficial to not just the town and our residents, but those who are looking to build and make more housing in here? And how do we make sure that the housing isn't just for, you know, those that can afford above and beyond, but making it affordable for a larger amount of the population that's out there? So that's, I think both of you are making amazing points and, you know, really I think the board really needs to listen to what both of you are saying and take that into our consideration as we look at additional bylaws in the future as well. Because it's not just about the affordability piece, but I feel like we're constantly hanging our hat on it. And we need to stop, we need to note that it is part of it, but it's not the end-all of it.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing that.
Any other comments?
My comments were aligned with what you were just saying, but I'll just repeat some of it, right? It's complex, complex soup of variables and a lot of this stuff needs to really be driven at the state level, but at the local level, we can, you know, I think Mr. Diamond made some pretty good points on things that we can look at in future, but, you know, for now, you know, and I, you know, I do recall, Mr. Diamond, that this was your citizen petition that, you know, made these numbers the way they are and, you know, respect for that and your ability to get everybody on the fly. This is like an on-the-fly thing, you know, that you kind of pitched and we all voted for, but I think this is one of the things that we have to scale back, but not lose sight of the other things that we have to tweak as well moving, moving forward. So conversation will be going on for a long time.
I agree.
So I guess I would add, because this, I think it goes back six years, at the time when I was clerk and I used to summarize the notices I was getting from all the other towns. And at that time, which precedes the meeting where you put this forward, there were many towns that were doing something very similar. I don't know where they were with regard to achieving their 10%, but towns like Walpole and
Metfield was one.
Yeah, there was a few towns that ended up capturing, getting captured in the notes. I remember presenting it at the monthly meeting. I remember you were listening at the time. Shortly after that, it moved forward to non-town, but it isn't like this is unheard of prior to when it got passed here. And I don't know the status of it right now in the other towns, if they're still, and obviously if you had the 10%, you wouldn't have to worry about people going to 40B. But I can't say where in my perception this had any impact one way or another. It is a safer thing to do once you're close to the 10%.
100%.
Agree.
And I think that, you know, to the point is that, you know, it's a balancing here and I think that's the, you know, people will hear oftentimes they talk about the amount of development that is seen in their town, the changes that are occurring, which they do. But we also don't want necessarily force changes that otherwise maybe could be prevented or designed a different way. And I will say that, you know, we are, as I mentioned the last time, there are, Stone in particular was the one that got challenged and lost. It hasn't gone through the appellate level yet, but as more towns have inclusionary bylaws, there could be a pressure point where developers decide they're going to take it all the way through the courts, say that it's a regulatory taking, and then you lose everything. I think we're trying to be mindful and I think we want to have managed growth and we also don't want to be the one that's out in front, sitting before the courts because we're up at a high percent and now we're, you know, putting ourselves in another spot.
I think we've been managing it creatively, right? Like with the MBTA overlay, I think that was chef's kiss. That was an amazing way for us to execute against that. You know, I think there's other opportunities for us as well as we move forward. You know, particularly, it would be great to understand all of these different waivers that are being requested for these 40Bs and getting a consolidated list of those and just really understanding, is this still serving the purpose? Or are we just being too restrictive for the sake of restriction?
Yeah, so right off the bat, the one that's going to jump out at you is that we require 200 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
You know.
55,000 square feet.
55,000 square feet. And the length of a dead-end street is 500 feet. So those right off the bat are the ones that jump out at you. I mean, you can't, you can't go into a property, and Lakeland Hills is probably the perfect, perfect example of multiple tries in terms of developing that property. I mean, you, to get to the piece where you can develop, it's like 1,500 feet before you even get to where you can really create lots. So those are the things, 500 feet is, quite frankly, that's an urban length of a street. It's not, it's not a length of a street in a rural community, you have 200 feet of frontage. So that's definitely a driving, big drive-in factor that we need to take a look at. And, you know, lot sizes, I mean, we don't want to go too far because then, you know, but it kind of cascades on itself. The towns established, I mean, the original lot sizes were 15,000 square feet.
Right.
Back when it first got adopted, the zoning bylaws back in the 50s, but it's multi-layered, clearly. No, we're not, and I fully agree that it's definitely multi-layered. So we still need to continue to look at the other things.
And we have to be creative about it because we don't want to like open up a can of worms where we end up with one acre of property with like 16 units on it in the middle of a very much like old neighborhood of other one acre properties with single family homes on it. You know, we've got to
Yeah, and that's, I mean, to Peter's point, the enclave, the example that went through long battles with the Conservation Commission, they wanted to try to have a wetland crossing to get over to Boardman Street, which was denied, and so, yeah, so there are definitely all those variables, so.
I think the other thing we have to be mindful of is, if I've learned anything from attending your, your meetings, is that, you know, we have some zoning that's existed for very, very, very long times. And we're starting to, or at least the meetings that I'm attending, I see you working through some of those things that were implemented in the 40s and the 50s. And I think it brings to light that maybe some of these need to be a little bit more flexible and, and they are going to be things that we, that you, this board can't make a decision on in 2025 and expect that in 2070, it's going to stay the same.
Right, 100%.
Great. Was it line by line?
Through the chair, that's okay?
As long as there's no other comments, I'm good with that. Let's do it.
So if we can pull up 310-8.3 and the first section I have a couple of comments on is B, applicability.
Bless you.
Just want to have everybody clued in on B, applicability, before I speak.
Yep.
Are we ready? So I'm curious and would like a better understanding of why we added the section of MGL, chapter one, chapter 41, subsection 81P to the language. What, what's the driver behind adding that language in our bylaw?
So if somebody were to file an A&R plan, that's the section of the statute that it will fall on 81P to create.
Approval not required on, on a street in town that's already approved.
Yeah.
So if someone were to do, for example, on Main Street at the corner of Myrtle, there's a long field, you take a right, if they wanted to do six houses on that Myrtle around the corner, approval's not required, nor is affordable housing, right?
No, but somebody could divide the land and then fall below so you wouldn't get anything out of it. They could.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a better understanding.
So instead of, so
It protects Norfolk by doing this?
Yes, because if you have enough frontage, let's say you can create six house lots along a long stretch of frontage, this provision says you're going to
Need one affordable.
You need one affordable, which we don't have today, so that's why.
So this says you would need one or you wouldn't need one?
You would.
It says this bylaw does not apply.
For something that's, that's right now, so nobody's filed anything as of right now, so now we're into, everything is past.
So it's basically saying it doesn't apply to it and at the end And then at the end, it says no project may be divided or phased to avoid the requirement of this section.
So through the chair, if I read this sentence, it says does not apply to development under MGL 41, Section 81P? Is that how we read it?
So it's actually anything?
That's the way.
We don't have anything filed yet. So for instance, nobody's filed a Form A plan?
Nobody has, but we're putting the language in here.
Yeah, so you have to have a start in time when this is going to be applicable. So from, this passes November 12th, then from that point forward, you cannot be able to divide a property and avoid this requirement.
Well, they wouldn't divide it. If they're going to build houses, it's not being divided. If they do A&R along Main Street and across Myrtle, put in 12 houses, because they've got 200 feet of frontage and whatever that zone requires, this bylaw does not apply.
So for this, for, for affordable.
Does that, does that make sense?
I don't think your interpretations make sense in terms of this provision.
Okay.
We can ask counsel to double-check, but.
Richard, are you just saying it would not apply if that plan had already been submitted?
Correct.
So it's basically, so you're not changing the rules midstream on a project that's already under review?
Correct.
But once this effect, this goes into effect.
This passes November 12th.
Everything after that, it does.
Yeah.
I have no more comments on that. If you could, if you'd allow us to move to, let's see, 310-8.3A3, Contribution of Funds to the Norfolk Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Three's quite a long section. And this is where you've, you've added the language that the payment in lieu of $350,000. And then my comment in the last sentence of the first paragraph says the planning board may consult with the Norfolk Affordable Housing Trust about payment in lieu amount as to whether or not the payment in lieu is preferable to an affordable unit on or off-site. So given that the affordable housing director's here, would, would better language be shall instead of may?
I.
May is really not a divisive verb. I think shall would say they have to come to us.
So the answer to that question is that the planning board can't delegate their authority to another, to the trust. So that's why it's may. They're the special permit granting authority. So that's why.
So they don't have to consult with us on whether or not they're going to choose to.
Correct. We had shall, and it was.
It was changed, okay?
Right.
That explains that.
Yep.
Okay. And then the second paragraph, if we could take a look at, "The cash payment formula and timetable may be adjusted by the special permit granting authority from time to time through the issuance of guidelines and regulations." And I can't understand the need for that sentencing there anymore if the payment is at a fixed amount of 350,000. So why would we have, why would we need a timetable to adjust and so forth as this sentence says?
I think that's just our mechanism of going back to changing it in the future.
And it's not necessarily fixed. It says a minimum of 350,000. So we went back and forth on this in a, in a previous meeting where we were trying to figure out, how do we put something in there that doesn't stay that number forever and be able to adjust that without having to go back to town meeting every single time when we're just really looking at a formula that changes constantly with, with housing values?
And I think that, that sentence has been in the, it's been in there for a while. So it isn't anything that was brought into this for, for the 350,000. That just, it kind of, my interpretation is, I don't even understand why it's needed because you have a fixed amount now. So there, what formula were we talking about? What guidelines and what regulations?
Oh, Peter, well, we had all these conversations.
You had them? I did watch the meetings.
It was a fun call.
It was really, we went through.
It was, it was in the public forum?
Yeah.
In a meeting?
I think it actually spanned two meetings because we were like, wait, what is it based on? Should we have a table?
It was two meetings. Because I brought it up, and I was a hard ass on it for a while.
Yeah.
And then we.
Like, we need something.
Talked about it in the second meeting, and y'all just talked me down from there.
But basically, it's different every time you make a calculation.
Yeah.
Right now.
It's constantly changing.
Number is fixed, to Peter's point, because it is 350.
Well, the minimum.
Minimum, the minimum.
Right.
Correct.
And the timetable, I know when you did, so the, the previous payment in lieu that was done, there was a special, they, through the permitting process, they, the board and the applicant gave a delivery time for the payments schedule.
Yeah, for example, the development on Norway Falls, where there's payment in lieu for one unit, if you built four houses, you'd pay a fixed amount, built the next one, another amount. So I can understand that timetable for payment. So is that, is that what this is for?
Similar.
Okay. I'm done with that. If any, if you all have done with that, I'd like to move on to the next comment. And that's the part where you have deleted the part that this shall not apply to a rental development. So meaning that you can take payment in lieu for a rental unit of $350,000. So through the chair, if you give me a minute to just gather my thoughts here, that I did, I did take a look through your videos at Norfolk Cable TV for July 8th, August 12th, and September 9th, along with a recent October 1st Advisory Board meeting. And there was absolutely no discussion or explanation of the payment in lieu component as it relates to rental units. So I'd, I'd like to have a better understanding of, does the $350,000, is that reasonable for a rental unit when that number was basically created for a single-family home unit in what I saw with your discussions? So, you know, was there consideration of that amount for a rental unit? Do you, you know, you talk about being challenged in court, would that be challenged in court of a developer having to pay $350,000 for a rental unit if he wanted to buy out instead of doing that? And one example could be you're moving to change Pawville Crossing to an MBTA, which is 140 units, which is only 14 units of rental, affordable housing at 10% if he buys out those 14 units. We have, we have no affordable units when that, when that's done. I, you know, this all goes against the housing production plan and our need for affordable housing in this town and rental units.
So just to clarify, the Pawville Crossing is under the MBTA, so that, that has its own inclusionary provision?
10%.
Correct. And there's no, there's no buyout?
There's no buyout on that?
No.
Okay, so we would get the 14 units?
We would, we'd get the 14 units.
So having said that, why, why did we create this? What, where were we looking? To eliminate rental units for our payment in lieu?
Again, the, it, it's a tool, it's an option. It doesn't mean the planning board has to, you know, hear an offering if that was the case from a developer to do a payment in lieu. I mean, more likely than not, I mean, it's hard to say, but.
I think it allows us the conversation, right?
It allows the conversation, you could say no.
They come to us and they say, this is the option that we have on the table, and we can say yes, this makes sense, or no, it doesn't make sense. Obviously, we're going to have you in the room so that we can discuss it. But sometimes it makes more sense to have cash in hand so that we can do something somewhere else as opposed to the location where it's being proposed.
So, so on that note, we received through your meetings $300,000 for payment in lieu at Project Off Medway Street. How has that money been spent for, for affordable housing?
I don't think we've been able to purchase a unit since, since that development. But that money came in, Peter, over several years. It, you know, it was 60,000, I think, for every four units sold, and that project probably went over three years. So I shouldn't be quick to say that I don't think we've bought anything. I'd have to go back and look at our last purchase, which I believe was on Merrill Lake. And we could have had two or three payments from that subdivision go towards the purchase of that home. But I'd have to, I'd have to double-check those dates. I'm happy to get back to you with that. But it did take Mr. Kane, I think probably almost three years, to get through that project and get the total amount paid.
So when it comes to a rental unit, I just don't see taking the payment in lieu, creating a one-for-one rental unit in any way, anywhere in this town. And I, I just don't see that that language should be in there. It's just my comment on that.
I appreciate it. And it's something that we can take under consideration, absolutely, but I think it does open that conversation for us.
Thank you. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And I just want to take a moment to thank you, considering everything that's happened on your side.
Yeah.
You taking the time out, watching those videos, consolidating these notes, coming to the board and bringing all of these concerns, it's always appreciated and it's always a pleasure to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do for the town.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
All right, just have a copy of my notes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so having heard all the comments, unless there are more, okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve Section 310-8.3 Affordable Housing Development for the November 12th, 2025 special town meeting.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As revised?
As revised, yes.
As revised. For both of them.
For both. Oh, no, for the second one.
Yeah, yeah.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Master Plan Implementation Committee, discuss the creation of a committee. Can we have a committee for the committee?
Thank you.
So appoint the committee?
So I did provide an example of, so it's a mix of, you know, some committees are a select board appointment, some are created through the planning board. So as in this, there's definitely options in terms of how you want to create it, and then who would want to serve on it. So I gave you some examples, just in a search to see what some of the other towns have I will say that I think it, it does need to happen in terms of what option you can certainly maybe if you want to have some discussion with the select board and kind of get their thoughts on, open, you know, talk about who would, who would be appointing. Could, I suppose it could even be a joint, too, you know, it may. So it's open in terms of how, what best fits for what you think be appropriate here, and then how many members would be on it, and where are they coming from? So is there, it's, it can be pretty tough to grab from that same pool of members that are already on existing boards and committees because they have a lot of other commitments, too. In particular, I think back from when you did the master plan, the Conservation Commission was, I don't think, they weren't really able to provide anybody with their bandwidth in terms of somebody to sit on that committee. And then, once we get through the whole open space recreation plan update, that's going to need its own implementation committee because that was something that didn't exist before, to have that popular with people who are going to be kind of the representatives from different entities to make sure that plan gets implemented. So, you know, it's, and then size, obviously, how big of a committee you want to be.
So what's the timeline?
It's your timeline. We're probably, I would say probably past due, almost. We're getting close because we're now a year into the, the plan. So I would think we would want to try to get something moved forward.
When can we get on the agenda with the select board to talk to them about this?
October 20th.
What?
Should we? Okay, so there's owner in the action plan that is in the folder. You have proposed owners for each of the areas. Shouldn't we just, if those are going to be the leads for each of these areas, then shouldn't that answer our question? Because it's by department, right? So like, there's land use, there's planning board, there's Department of Public Works, there's Cultural Council. I mean, first, I don't, I don't know that we all agree on the owners because we haven't, I don't think we've talked about that in a prior meeting, so I guess we'd have to review that. But then wouldn't that be the, like, each one of these has its own owner once it's all agreed? So then that seems like it would be at least a starting point for the implementation team, somebody from each one of these areas. If we're going to have owners and we're going to manage this as a project, then those.
It's really more the, the implementation committee is kind of the management. Like, so who are they going to report to in terms of that? That's kind of the, the concept of it.
They're going to report to a whole committee?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Or it could be.
I feel like, like, one project manager is usually good.
No, but I mean, in terms of their area, it's going to be divided, right, amongst different tasks, implementation things, so they're going to need to.
Their own people to.
Yeah, their own people.
Delegate to.
They're going to delegate to their own people, and then you're going to want to, they're going to have to report back that they have at least accomplished the, one of the objectives or not, or why not, you know, to kind of oversee it more than management structure. I mean, the implementation committee is more the manageable structure, right, to oversee it because it's going to be divided. And then, to your point, I mean, some of these things might be divided within their own little sub-implementation, who's going to do it, too. But generally, that's how it's kind of structured, kind of a.
Very government structure kind of way.
Yes. It's a government kind of structure thing. I mean, it doesn't, you know, it's a live and breathing document, so you don't, you could actually, if you wanted to manage it yourself in terms of the board, the planning board, you know, it's your, you know, you voted the plan, you could not necessarily rely on a, on an implementation committee, and you can get, you know, report back on different tasks and, you know, get reports back on where we are in this project in terms of the implementation. So that, that's certainly an option, too. But it just needs, it just, to the point is, we don't, you can't sit on, you really don't want to sit on a shelf, right? So these things need to be actively engaged in to make sure there, there's movement towards completion of it, or what are the issues or stumbling blocks that might be uncovered while you're trying to move it forward? So, you know, that's, that's kind of really the, you know, basis to have a committee. But to my earlier point, maybe that's not, that might be a harder fit here with everybody, you know, already tapped out. Or maybe it's more geared towards those people, citizens that want to be involved, but they're not necessarily on a board and committee. It's an opportunity for them to be engaged in the process and learn things and, you know, somewhat in terms of like the Citizen Academy, right? We're going through that exercise for people to participate. These are goals, objectives, and from the townspeople. So maybe it's, it certainly could be more citizen-driven, you know?
Can we start with that as a reach-out?
Yeah.
Can we say, all of y'all out there on the internet?
We could.
Want to join the committee? Let us know.
Yeah. What, in terms of starting, you would think maybe five, you know, have it, you know?
I think that's appropriate.
You know, at least, we could definitely do that. Again, we kind of touched on what they want away from, but I could reach back out to people who were citizens involved in the master plan and steering committee, see if they then would want to serve on that.
Yeah.
I think they'd probably, I mean, if it were me, I would want to know what the expectations are, how often are we going to meet, you know, like, all of the, I would want to know more detail before just, yep, I'm in, because I don't know if I can actually commit to it.
I'm looking for a nomination of Melissa to lead the.
Organize it?
To create the committee.
All right, I'll work on this, this month. All right, I'll work on this this month, well, in the next couple weeks. I'll, Rich, we can have our meeting. I'll come in and bring you coffee and we can chat and we can work through it.
All right.
I just said I haven't seen you in a long time, so now we'll see each other.
So come on in.
And say hello to Betsy, and then I'll-
We could provide a-
I think should be-
Series of recommendations.
Yeah, and then bring it back to you guys.
I think it made sense for you to reach out to folks as well and just say, this is something that we're thinking of doing.
Yeah, certainly, in the meantime, I could reach out to the folks that are on the Steering Committee.
Yeah. I mean, they're, yeah, they already know what was involved last time, yeah.
I mean, I think it will need to be formalized in terms of what their duties will be, duration and all that. We definitely need to put all that together.
Yeah, I mean, what if we just sent a message out, or Rich sends a message out to those folks and just FYI, you know, we don't want this to just be a pretty document on a shelf, so we are gonna be, we're figuring out the next steps for putting a committee together to implement everything that we worked on for 16 months, you know? If you'd like to help, you know, just feel free to raise your hand, otherwise we'll be sending out more formal communications.
Perfect.
When we know more.
Yeah, I think you can engage input while we at the same time put together some sort of draft proposal for what the actual structure and commitment level would be.
Okay.
I love it.
All right, so we'll-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're gonna have-
Thank you.
Chad come back.
Oh, I miss her. I thought you said we're gonna have Chad come back. I was like, what's he?
I would love that. Can we fly him in?
He said chat and I immediately thought ChatGPT.
GPT.
That's what I thought you were going, but I-
Nice, I was like, you're gonna AI, awesome.
And you know what we can do too? We can meet and go through what we think-
I did AI, by the way, so if you see the-
M dashes? If there's M dashes throughout?
I love M dashes. You would never be able to tell if it was me or ChatGPT because I use M dashes in my regular communication.
Just for the heck of it, I put in, in your master plan, the implementation committee. So if you see that, everything that's pulled together, then that was ChatGPT.
I love it. You're modernizing.
Nice, let's do it.
I was reading, I was reading that tonight, eating dinner, and it says my wife, I think this came from ChatGPT.
But good for you.
You get the paid subscription to really up the, up the game.
Yeah, yeah.
Paid subscription is worth it.
Yeah, that was a-
It's definitely worth it.
That was a free, uh, yes.
But it's good to play around with it first, make sure you like it before you spend the 20 bucks a month.
It's worth it.
It is worth it, though.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, town planner updates. Wait, did we skip 28 Long Meadow?
Nope.
No, no, we didn't skip it, we didn't do it.
We didn't do it.
All right.
So, yeah.
I don't have any, I don't have any further updates. We can just go to 28 Long Meadow?
Yep, 28 Long Meadow. This is when we're supposed to start with the hammering of fines.
Yeah. So we have not, as you know, received a stormwater permit, earth removal bylaw. Going back through the stormwater bylaw, some things that, one, be a recommendation, I think, from the, my recommendation to the board would be to designate me as your agent, because that's something that's in the bylaw. I think in this particular instance, for now, just for this project, and then, once we kind of sell out in terms of, you know, a DPW director to the interim, because there's a lot, so the fining provision in here runs through DPW director. So for now, I think it, talking with council to, you know, vote to authorize me to be your agent so I can do fining and administration of it for now, and then we'll revisit it at some point in terms of when there's a permanent director. But we haven't received anything. I think it's, I think it is time. And it can be done on, it doesn't have to be consecutive, it can be random, but I think it should start now.
Yep. I say monthly cadence.
Yeah. I think, I think I would do, I would, I would propose that we do it daily.
Yeah, because the fines per day.
Per day, yeah.
So if you do it monthly, you can't just batch.
That's fair.
Right, it's gotta be, it's gonna be-
So we'll, it will require a little bit of a-
Postage?
Postage, because we have to provide a letter with the fine each day. So, and when I say each day, I would be proposing four days a week, coincide with our four-day work week.
Yeah.
Not, you know?
So I sat in on the last ConCon meeting. Doesn't, like, there's just no, there's just no traction on this? Like, I feel like the gentleman was here three months ago and seemed like, it's like, yeah, I'm gonna figure it all out. So that just-
He had people on board and everything.
The engineer said that they were in process too. Everybody, they just started ghosting everybody now?
We've been, all indications, we've been ghosted to this point. As you probably, so the Conservation Commission did reach out to the DEP Circuit Rider because of concerns about some of the reportable concentrations. So it could be an MCP, that's contingency plan, in terms of, so that, that, if, if it does take traction there, that's certainly gonna amp things up significantly because now the DEP is gonna be potentially involved with it. So, but, yeah, we've been essentially ghosted to this point. We're not hearing anything out.
So you started writing letters about a fine and mailing them months ago?
Well, I didn't, it was more, it was a threat.
Threats you mailed.
I would be, would be.
I get it.
But now, now it's real. I'm asking for the board to-
Yeah.
Vote to point, authorize me to be your agent and to start sending out fines because we want to have a record of that. So it's in the minutes, so in case we end up-
So the motion has to be that we are gonna appoint you as agent to handle the fining for the, for the-
Filing.
Management bylaw.
For 28 Long Meadow Road.
28 Long Meadow, okay.
Is the ConCon issuing any fines?
No.
Do they have, they don't have authority to?
It's a little bit, they do under the wetland bylaw, but they haven't as of yet.
Well, it's the triggering DEP stuff that's just as bad. I'd rather take the fines.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve Rich as the agent of the planning board for 28 Long Meadow Road Storm Water Management and Earth Removal Permit Nonconformance.
So I would just, just a friendly amendment to that, authorize the Director of Planning and Development to be your authorized agent.
Fancy. All right, I would like to authorize the Director of Planning and Development to act as the agent of the planning board of Norfolk for 28 Long Meadow Road for nonconformance of the Storm Water Management and Earth Removal Permit requirement.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Rich, get that damn going.
Thank you.
Let's do it. All right. You said no updates, 2025 meeting schedule. I won't be able to join, I won't be able to join the November 10th meeting, Gary.
That means I'm in charge.
You are in charge.
God help us all.
You've gotta have the same amount of vigor and vinegar that I've been bringing to these meetings.
And the humor, just the happiness.
Gary, you did it before and it was the senior center one, and that was, you know?
Funny.
So that was a-
So funny.
Awesome.
It's a good first one.
Calling the room, any other unanticipated business? Hearing none, I'd love a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Have a good night.
Before 9 o'clock.